All right, I'll see you later. The more we're gonna start sending that stuff down.
This is a lot of things that can be done. Yeah, a lot of projects.
I'm gonna go before you. It's been a while. These are the emails.
Yeah, I just wanna tell you.
Do I say it?
I know. Yeah. Incorporated channels again. Yes, what I should say is that is the conversation. In the three three app. Into a campaign.
I had that.
Person has to work it.
That one time.
It's my kind of road. Yeah. Yeah. And then we just did it and not because. And please, please.
So then he just goes. Oh, you can look at it. They got their first one.
Check into it. Yeah. Perfect thing.
See, I also talked to you about being a sponsor.
I'm just lying.
Just want your match for the wildlife education. I think we're off track now. We'll see. There's the competition. We should maybe. Then you stop some pusher taking the gun. But we're no longer self sensual. And really, twenty five over. And it's a combination.
So now policy as far as. That the priority we're going to send. He's waiting to go.
So perhaps that would have to do with the with this grant for vets. So events.
Oh, okay.
For advancing the wildlife and the.
Okay.
The media sponsor.
So southeast would call in for a EIF. Apparently for two hundred seventy five thousand for the study. Yeah.
Oh, the group is like. They could become two persons in the second. He's about to let down that.
Well, south central or southeast?
It's all of us. It's a real.
It's been practiced for like about two weeks. I take things out.
Yeah. I was asking.
I actually did some room. And I was, yeah.
Well, it's. It's down. And so. It sits right there. It's supposed to be our mirror. And because we can be moving faster than we were. And but. Maybe they want. We got an opportunity to make a comment. So I made. We don't exactly about that.
Well, good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Recording in progress.
We won't give any more receiving to the following. I would just say we do. There's so much.
It is gonna get worse if some of you don't.
This one.
Well, I'll just zoom in on it. Your flip flops and shorts. I'm not gonna type.
Type talk.
Yeah, I knew. I knew you told her the jacket. I think my couch is not working.
Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome all of you to this. That's how the board, County Commissioners' regular meeting. Today's Tuesday, July 2nd. It is going so fast. It is nine AM now. I want to ask all of you to rise for any vacation by Commissioner Tony Haswell or by the religion of Commissioner Liz Lopez.
Mistress Lord, during this special month of July, we gather to express our gratitude for the many blessings you bestowed on our lives. We come before you with Lord's full appreciation, recognizing that every good and perfect gift comes from your hand. We give thanks for the freedom we enjoy in our country, for the opportunities and privileges that are ours. We are grateful for the men and women who have sacrificed their lives, serving our nation and protecting our liberties. May their bravery and selflessness never be forgotten. As we celebrate this month, may we be reminded of the ultimate sacrifice made by your Son Jesus, who gave his life so that we may have eternal life. We thank you for the comforting those blessed or fortunate who mourn, and give them a reason to be happy again. Thank you, Lord, for all these meeting our needs, trusting in your grace and your strength.
Amen. Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, welcome to the going camp. Commissioner Liz Lopez. Push your ass. Here. Push your peace.
Here. Agreement of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Parker?
Three Gs, Commissioners. I asked for the items nine D, nine G, and nine J.
Any questions and discussion, Commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain any motion.
Move to approve the agenda with those religions. Second motion.
Commissioner Liz Lopez.
Yes.
Push your ass.
Yes.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes. You don't have any items on section two? Go to section three, reading of correspondence, Commissioner Community Board. Commissioner Liz Lopez, you might go first.
Thank you, Chairman. It's been a nice, it's been nice. So we haven't had a whole lot of meetings going on other than a couple of brief meetings. So Congress Rail, met on the twenty eighth of June for a quick meeting regarding some housekeeping contracts that we had to get set up. Uh, move forward with some issues now. We've decided not to go to the ballot. There's some issues that go in for consultants that we retain on. And we're forward with them. There was no monetary fees for fine fines. I'm sorry, fees along with this consultants. It's just reducing them on available for any need that we have necessary for the Congress Rail. Also, we'll start a new process. So we begin more community outreach. Now we have time to move forward with a ballot measure and the finance committee. We're going to consider some options with the Government Affairs Committee of looking how to fund the campaign properly and make sure we develop all finance, campaign finance laws. Moving forward, I look forward to that opportunity. We look forward to six months and a year of opportunity of fundraising for the fundraiser for a campaign. Also, on that same conversation that I had, the general manager, who asked you yesterday regarding that particular issue, whether a ballot measure passes and hoping and thinking that it will. The question I brought up is to remote share back to the communities that are going to be paying into the stacks. And we're going to evaluate that by the finance committee and the board to assist for any type of grant processes on the funds that the community, Los Angeles County, or Bertha County, that are going to be sent, will be collecting and tasked without having a rail for the next fifteen years. So it's a cost share back type program we're gonna evaluate, consider, and look into for the board. I think it will be a better selling pitch to the communities who may not have a train sooner than later. And it will be having expenditure on their sets tax if it is passed to benefit the community over those years. Probably hopefully maybe infrastructure, a train station, a grant processes for some transportation needs. We're gonna be through the county, city, council of governments. So we're gonna evaluate that. And I'm really happy to see that this was taken by the general manager with enthusiasm instead of opposition. He believes that the conversations he's had going down the court are share the same sentiments with the communities who visit with it on this type of process. So in other words, we're collecting money on it. Why can't that be utilized in the community that we collect it from? Whether it be in the form of a grant, whether it be located in the revenue in our local banks, where the local banks can then back to the community, or some other type of processes. So I'm looking forward to that. See what happens. On the also the twenty eighth, I met with General Burge at the Park. We had an issue. We had just a quick result. It's the treasure of that organization. I had to get some bank paper we're signing. And we were able to meet here for that. So they were coming up and take care of that briefly. It wasn't a little big deal. We had a little bank account. And then also I'd like to congratulate Kerry Apple and her staff in the reporters office for a great election. And thank you for all the work that they did along with the election judges. And congratulations to Commissioner Liz Lopez, who is running and will be our next commissioner for District Three. District One for another four years. Congratulations to this district. And that's my report. Thank you. Push your ass.
Well, Commissioners, on June twenty fifth through the twenty seventh, for three days, the Environment and Parks Assistance Committee event. And we reviewed Tier Two and Tier One areas with thirty million available. Twenty one million was, was profits were awarded. There were forty nine worthy projects across the state. Topics of consideration included broadband, affordable housing, renovations to the county buildings, new builds, grid energy development, grid replacement, pavement construction, sewer and water infrastructure renovations, and street and ADA improvements. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Well, I wanna wish all of you a safe and joyous Fourth of July. It is a month. One of the, a couple of things, I was nominated and actually I just received a letter yesterday to participate on the Language Access Advisory Board on a piece of legislation that was run as a study. Looking forward to at the end of this month. I'm gonna be there for a couple of ways. Looking at some of the mandates of legislation that were proposed. And my understanding is that there's gonna be a recommendation from this particular group to have access pretty much. And I don't know this for certain, but in so many languages mandated by legislation that's gonna be introduced in 2024. So well, one of the things that I was selected for is I'm gonna be strong voice that if the state's gonna require us to do something, they better put the dollars behind it. Because if I have a translator and or even acquire software, it could be a big challenge. So I'll keep you posted on that. Also, we had a meeting on the Immigration Reform Committee Group at the national level with the National Association of Counties. And there are many, many resolutions that are going forward. So I'm looking forward to having a debate here in the next couple of weeks. Some of the resolutions, of course, are asking for stream line processes for legal immigration and so on. But I'll keep you posted as I attend these meetings. Then briefly, I had a, I had a, we had the honor last week to welcome and it was kind of a spur of the moment President Armando Lopez from CHU, and his CFO, the federal Commissioner Harrison Ortiz. They happen to be visiting Trinidad State. So I had an opportunity to catch up with them. And of course, they would like to invite all students of CHU. And take a look at, take a look at their scholarships. Big guys, of course, they would like to keep that talent and certainly a great, great institution. So the last thing I want us to mention is as we go to get to the process, there's a lot of conversation going on right now with agriculture. And Colorado is now on the map as the election is gonna be happening here in November. The meat processing plant, the land processing plant that is downtown Denver. We get a lot of information on all the dollars that are coming in from outside the United States to actually shut down this plant. And the proponents of this particular Dallas initiative are not gonna stop. They already identified several other states. They have many, many individuals working in the group. I mean, working around. And so they have named Oregon. They have named Washington State and other states that are gonna be working with. And eventually, what they're saying that plant-based food is putting where once they, if they get this thing passed in Denver, they're gonna go on. And then, of course, they could make this national. So if you have any family, any friends in Denver, in the city and county of Denver, that's the only order electorate that's gonna be according on this particular initiative. Let them know to oppose this. And I know Assessor Mario is gonna be attending here in a conference pretty soon. And I'm gonna send you a lot of information on that because it's just incredibly misunderstood. And this group doesn't really understand that this is the way of life for rural America. So that's gonna be my report. And we are gonna go now to elective officials update. And we have Assessor Mario right here with us. Looks like we do have an update. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. You know, I'm always the bearer of the good, the bad, and the ugly. Well, I hope everyone is going to have a happy, happy fourth because I think when we get back, our lives are gonna get a little bit busier. I attended our Colorado Assessors Conference the third week in June. And we did a lot of discussion, cussing, debating, and tearing apart Senate Bill twenty four two three three. We spent a full seven hours with our lobbyists, our attorneys, trying to figure out how we are going to implement this along with our computer software programmers. I can tell you, small, small counties, whatever developer they were on, some of the smaller developer or campus systems, they were told they need to look for a different, that's a computer software. They are not able to keep up with it, to get developers to implement this law because it is so intricate. So we do have some of my neighbors that are small counties are, have a year, if not about a nine month window, to find a new software. Unfortunately, it takes an eighteen month process to get converted and implemented. So a lot of county assessors are stuck between a rock and a hard spot right now. Well, I do have some good news for 2024. Our rates and actual value adjustments will stay the same as we did in 2023. So we will be able to get tax rule abstract certification completed and out to our local governments in a timely fashion, just like our old calendar was. We won't have the extended dates like we had last year. So we will be getting things out in August and in December. And things should run fairly smooth. We will be applying the fifty five thousand to all actual residents and the thirty thousand to commercial. And we will be reducing those residential rates like we did in tax year 2023. So that should make things, our crystal ball's a little bit clear on that one. Thank heaven. We have to report any loss of revenue like we did last year to the property tax administrator by March first of 2025. And at this time, unfortunately, because there was no time to vet or dissect or digest Senate Bill twenty four two thirty three, if any local government sees a reduction from property tax year 2022 to current, they will receive backfill. What legislatures did not understand was that as assessors, we perform yearly assessments, personal property, oil and gas, possess re-interest, and we do have some fluctuation. We are going to see a lot of local governments that are in oil and gas counties receive more backfill, substantially more backfill this year than they did last year because our oil and gas values declined so greatly. And we tried to tell legislatures, there are things we do annually that have an impact on value from year to year. That message was lost in translation. So we had a few of our entities, especially on the western part of our county, that received possibly ten to thirteen thousand in backfill. They can be receiving in the hundreds, up to a hundred thousand, if not more, because oil and gas values declined. Had nothing to do with residential assessment rates or actual value reductions.
May I add, yes, where the backfill is coming from?
We are not, we weren't told specifically, but you could take a guess, Commissioner. Yes. Considering, I'm sure you've seen the fiscal outlook for the state. I've seen the fiscal outlook for the state. They're going to have to get those monies from the Untouchable Fund. Unfortunately, that's not the only place they're going to be able to get them. Now, going into 2025, we are looking at two assessment rates for residential properties. The school assessment rate of seven point one five and all other local governments of six point four. And that is where the computer programmers and our software companies are having a hard time implementing this. This will be the first time in history that Colorado will send, we will have split assessment rates for local governments, for taxing entities. We have worked out kind of for one year. Counties that can't get implemented with a new software company can use a multiplier, but only for one year only, the tax year 2025. But that buys them a little bit of time to find a software company that they can either afford or work with, or as many are going to retire at the end of this year. So we are actually losing about ten good seasoned assessors at the end of this year who just cannot handle the stress from the legislative changes. So we're gonna be losing lots and lots of experience and education.
Listen, is there a company recommended? Or just right now, I think you have a good network support when it comes to the software.
Correct.
Is there one that has already said, we can do all those things?
There. We don't have one. Not one company has stepped forward and said, we can make this work. Even Tyler, and they have the majority of assessors offices in the state of Colorado. We have thirty eight counties. They are struggling to put this together. And they are essentially the largest provider of assessment software in the state. And they are having a hard time understanding. So in 2025, we are told there is no backfill or no reimbursement for any value reduction. So currently, that is standing in the bill. One of the things we're looking in 2025, we, as the Assessors Association, we put forth a resolution. We are drafting a cleanup bill that we will be finding sponsors to take. One of them was, we used to have all other properties of property. So that was commercial, industrial, vacant, and agricultural. All had one separate assessment rate. Residential had its own assessment rate. Well, through the new legislative law, commercial and ag will have an assessment rate. And then vacant and industrial will have a separate assessment rate. So that is another complication to our software that we have to figure out how to do. We are asking in our resolution as part of the cleanup bill that all other properties fall under the new assessment rate starting in 2025 to 2026. So it would be for commercial, industrial, ag, and vacant land, just not commercial and ag. And thank heaven, at the last minute, we were able to get ag in there. But we're trying to get the rest of those, all other properties in there also to help ease an already complicated bill. Twenty twenty five, qualified senior homestead exemptions. They are making the senior exemption portable. So you must have already qualified for it, owned and occupied your home for the previous ten years, been approved, and receiving a senior exemption. You must either do some life circumstance changes and you have to downsize or you move towards your grandkids. You can now take that senior exemption and take it to your new home that you purchased. But the state is only going to allow that for two years. They do not know where the funding is going to come from, the backfill at this time.
So question for that. Does that, that funding mechanism correlate with the triple A program?
Correct.
Every excess dollars that are not utilized goes to triple A. What's gonna happen after two years of that? Are they, are they gonna still remain if you're still in your house and not relocate? That I understand for only two years. What about the remainder, if we'll just stay in our home?
Now, our senior, our current senior exemption that we've had since 2002 at this time is fully funded. This is just the portable senior exemption.
Portable exemption.
My understanding, talking with some lobbyists, is that they are trying to, the legislatures are trying to figure out where to come up with the backfill. Because currently, how the senior exemption is, the state backfills the county treasurer because we just send reports to them of how much exemption lost in tax dollars we're getting. They send it to us and the treasurer disperses it to each entity. So everybody's made whole. The senior exemption, once again, we didn't have time to vet it. So there's a little hiccup in it. This is also on our resolution for a cleanup bill. Currently, the current senior exemption that's been in existence since 2002, we only exempt the first fifty percent of a hundred, of two hundred thousand dollars. So a hundred thousand dollars gets exempted of actual value. Under the new bill, the portable exemption, we will take ten percent of the first seven hundred thousand, followed by fifty percent of the first two hundred thousand with a one thousand dollar assessed floor.
That's a tough question.
Very much so. And so we are asking for this to be cleaned up. We think this was just one of those unfortunate copy and pastes of a hurried bill to get in front of legislatures. So we are hoping we can get that cleaned up in our cleanup bill because our computer system doesn't even know how we're gonna handle to assessment rates, let alone how we're going to give up a handful of portable senior exemptions, essentially three exemptions.
Now, now that would be quite a hundred and ten thousand, right?
It would be.
A hundred thousand on the first exemption, but.
A hundred thousand of seven hundred thousand dollars. So if your house is seventy. It's seventy thousand. And then fifty percent of two hundred thousand.
Forty thousand. It's a hundred and ten thousand. So it changes by about ten thousand.
Yes. It's actually be a hundred and seventy thousand off their home.
So as we move forward and this evolves into next January, is there any applications are open? When do you start taking applications?
We start taking that, for this year, we end January or July fifteenth. Next year, we start January one.
Oh, and that occurs. I'll be gone. So if you could please keep Council of Governments in the loop for the.
I will.
Rock and roll. Late program.
I can definitely do that, Commissioner.
It is not really so much that they're gonna, they're receiving tax dollars from that exemption. There are other funding mechanisms funded for other program from the excess that's available left over.
Right. And they help a lot of our seniors. They're a great source of information out there to our seniors who do this. And because of the new bill, we have to, currently, seniors and vets have to get their, their applications to my office by July fifteenth. Now they're due by March fifteenth, and they have no appeals rights. So we're supposed to be taxpayer friendly. So we're also trying to get that in the cleanup bill as to, please, we need to get this taken care of. Now, here's a fun one. There's a new five point five percent limit on all local governments. If you're familiar with budgeting and local government, you already know we are subject to a five and a half percent growth limitation. We're also subject to taper limitations. Well, now we will have a new certification form where all local governments have to report to myself, the county assessor, if they are subject to taper or not. We had a long conversation about this because there's new boards. When people debruised, de-tapered back in the early and late nineties, those board members are either gone, deceased, moved on, no longer in our state. Their attorneys are the same situation. They are going to be calling my office and the clerk's office to find out if they are debruised or not. So it's put extra legwork on myself, my staff, the clerk's staff, for us to do all this historical research when really, we're going to have to send them to either Department of Local Affairs or an attorney so they can figure it out themselves. But it is going to add extra load. And then those forms have to be reported to the Board of County Commissioners. And then we have to send them up north. There is a caveat. The new limit applicable to those that have the authority to exceed the five and a half and the new taper limit will probably have to go back to the vote of their constituents to get re-debruised under the new Senate bill.
That's, that's gonna be challenged. I would challenge it in court.
And that's what I said. And actually, my assessor's attorney and our lobbyist and sixty two assessors were all, we were all in agreement. I think that this part of this is going to get tied up in.
I want this bill, this bill passed.
Yes, this bill, yes, this is Senate Bill twenty four two three three.
Well, that part two three.
Yes.
So a couple of questions before you move forward. One is, what is the cleanup bill that you're speaking of? As the Assessors Association had a communication with the legislative relations of the Senate and the House? And what is the, what has been the response when you clean that bill in a sense without, for saying, you didn't.
You messed up pretty big. If it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it is a duck. If it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it is a duck. Some are starting to see the air of their ways. The larger pushers of this bill are taking it very personally. And so, we're going to have some pushback from a couple senators.
Well, and I tell you one thing, it is keep us, because we're CCI, we can push hard, because every one of the counties, like you said, from the assessors to our responsibilities, once we have a white paper on the cleanup, we can definitely, and this is gonna be by person?
It has to be, it has to be. I've actually reached out to our local House and Senate representative. I'm meeting with them in the next couple weeks to see if they would graciously take this bill on. We are waiting to see, a couple of the folks that said they would are in reelection at this time. So, we're waiting to see the outcome of that. Unfortunately, the drafters of this bill that were also on the blue panel, blue ribbon panel, are spies, are taking this very personally, that this was what we decided, and this is a good thing. In reality, it is not. There are some consequences to having multiple assessment rates. Our abstract is going to look different, it's going to function differently. Our certification of levies, especially to our TIF district, it's going to have some impact there, because we essentially will be, have two sets of books per se. So, that's also in the cleanup bill. Because one set of books is going to be strictly for school finance and school local tax dollars. TIF is going to have to look at all other local governments. But it is going to be impactful, because even the TIF districts, our URA districts, are going to receive less funding, because we're diverting more funds to local schools. Our tax.
So, this year, our tax instrument funding was higher in collection than we anticipated as a URA.
Good.
Forty-five thousand, except for going eight thousand. So, I'm just going to anticipate this dropping fat to our expectations. Where, the reason for the increase is by, where the assist evaluation is going up?
Going up, and a hotel being developed, and some local development, things of that nature.
So, I'll bring that to the...
Please do. Because I'm sure I'll be getting an invitation to come speak back there. Our tax warrants, what I deliver to the treasurer, is going to look very different. Treasurers, I think we're going to see a wave of them exiting also their positions. Because this is a whole new, essentially, they're gonna have to develop two tax bills. One for all other entities, one for local schools. And it's going to be complicated to explain. This is something new, it's something strange, and it's something we've never, like I said, in this history of Colorado, we've never had this. So, it's going to be very unique. When it comes to abatements, it's going to be hard to explain to taxpayers and to those entities when we have to correct a tax bill and an abatement, because we have different assessment rates, different mechanisms moving. In 2026, should this bill go forward, schools are set at seven point one five percent assessment rate. Local governments are six point nine five, and this is in tax year 2026. And then, we will add ten percent of the first seven hundred thousand dollars to all residential properties with an assessed value for a thousand dollars. So, in rural Colorado, this could be very impactful. We can see revenue going down, we can see assessed values going down, because we are removing a good chunk of actual value. The senior exemptions, we're gonna see how that plays out. Hopefully, we can get this bill passed. Once again, we're trying to get all other properties, including vacant and commercial, in for the twenty-five percent assessment rate, instead of having commercial and ag at twenty-five for twenty-six into perpetuity, and all other at twenty-nine. It would just, it's a, it's a, it's how we have done business for many, many years. It makes sense, it's, there's also some constitutional issues there, so we're hoping that gets taken care of. Now, there is a caveat. This State Board of Equalization may temporarily reduce the assessment rate for school districts to keep the local share of statewide school total program funding at sixty percent. Currently, I think we're at forty-eight percent, so I don't ever, I don't know if we will ever see the total school funding up to sixty percent, but they did put that in the bill. We have another House bill, twenty-four, thirteen, oh, two, which means local governments will be reporting our data to me, therefore, I will be giving it to you. This will all be on the mill levy sheet, and the Board of County Commissioners must report this and approve it to the state, just like we do at the end of the year when we adopt all the mill levies. Twenty-four, twenty-five, counties, we must provide all of that data to the state. So, essentially, they're making us the police and all of our local governments to ensure that they get us, whether they're de-brused, what their mill levies are, if they exceeded the five and a half. So, I need to pass this on to you gentlemen.
And all of this is subject to the two bills that are gonna be out in the future.
I'm gonna get to that. Yes. Oh, this, it's been a fun, fun adventure. Then, in 2020, twenty-six, should this, should this bill that is currently law continue to go forward, all data must be publicly available on our website. So, we, as the county, must be able to provide what local governments are de-brused, which ones are in accordance or applying, abiding by the five and a half percent increase. That is on us to put that out there publicly. So, that means one more unfunded mandate. So, if the tax initiatives pass, so currently, we have Senate Bill twenty-four, two, thirty-three. It is repealed if Initiative Fifty passes or if Initiative One-O-Aid passes. Initiative Fifty is a four percent statewide cap on all property tax revenue. And the simplest way I can say this, if there is one entity, one local government in the state of Colorado that exceeds four percent growth on revenue, every entity in the state of Colorado has to abide by this. So, we, once again, are putting everybody in the same box. We are cookie cutter all the way. And I don't think that's fair, because you might have exceeded growth, large revenue gains in Denver metro, and that means rural Colorado is going to have to abide by this. Even though we don't have the growth, we don't have the market, we don't have the construction, but if they exceed four percent, one of those exceeds four percent. All entities in the state of Colorado have to abide by Initiative Fifty.
So, for little capital in Colorado, is it gonna have to abide by?
Yes, yes, whatever happens if one local government exceeds that four percent revenue growth. The next one is Initiative One-O-Aid. So, for One-O-Aids, this one, I think, is going to get a lot of pushback from the state. This is the one that will make the state budget have to cut by three billion dollars. The simplest way it was explained to us is, in order for the state to do that, they would have to cut all higher education funding, all corp system funding, and all Department of Human Services funding, and that would be the three billion right there. But if One-O-Aid passes, it dictates that the state must cut three billion from their state budget. So, that is why the legislatures came forward with Senate Bill twenty-four, two, thirty-three. We will see what happens. I think voters are getting more educated. I think voters are educating themselves and educating their neighbors. We'll see what happens. None, all three of these, the Senate Bill and both initiatives are not a solution to the so-called property tax problem. But we will see what happens. We were still told there was a possibility that one of these ballot initiatives might get pulled. My personal opinion, I don't see that happening. We are too close to an election, and there's too much funding driving these, so we will see what we get. Let's see, what else do I have here to make your guys' day? A lot of this stems from, because we repealed Gallagher in 2020. And Gallagher, as we all know, kept the sixty-fourty ballots on assessment rates. So, this year, last year when values increased, we'd seen our residential rate go. We probably would have never been in this, letting legislatures become tax experts and developing bills that don't solve anything. Then, after 2020, we began tweaking assessment rates. Then, they passed twenty-three, three, oh, three, which were, we got all reductions. Then, we created the Property Tax Course. Now, we're sitting here with Senate Bill twenty-four, two, thirty-three. Everything that was in two, thirty-three, making seniors not reportable, was about the only one that came out of that panel. The rest were not even considered in this. To make matters worse, we also had two bills that were passed that affect oil and gas companies, which I'm afraid we will see here locally have a significant impact for our county. Unfortunately, we saw one that is, it's an increased fee for their production. So, it's going off severance tax, and they want to pay a fee on production to help support the light rail and infrastructure of North. The second bill was the emissions bill to help clean air. So, we will be seeing our oil and gas companies paying an extra fee to comply to make sure emissions in Denver are cleared because of oil and gas.
And that was, one of those was One-O-four, and that was put on at the last minute, just like everything else. Front Range Rail will have a benefit from it, but it hasn't been determined. The majority of it is to stop the transportation, it is light rail, not the front range passenger rail.
The light rail.
Light rail, and during the, so that is all gonna, now, the stages of planning and whose authority, and what's the allocation. We've got no administrative costs out of this, just for capital period. So, Lacer's gonna be going towards infrastructure for rail, front range rail, and not administrative costs, and salaries and stuff like that. So, we've got one glimmer of light for Southern Colorado.
Good.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Of having that track in place, or positive train control, which we just had a cross, crossing accident.
Yesterday.
Because we had anthrax without having the positive train control, we would have location. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they could not have, or if it was not working properly, because in your district, in Starkville yesterday, that crossing was on high alert during that incident.
Incident.
They didn't stop linking. So, I know they were not connected right, so, but, but the One-O-four, that, that bill, you know, at the last minute, and again, front range rail, we didn't have a say or a position on it, because you're doing so...
So fast.
So fast, I ask, we didn't have time to check.
I understand, and I sympathize. That's why we have Senate Bill twenty-four, two, thirty-three. Now, to get on to our day-to-day lives. We are in wrapping up the protest. I have met with Ms. Paula, so we can get County Board of Equalization hearings done. We had minimal protests. I will actually be providing her a list on July fifteenth. We had, I don't even think we had a hundred told between residential and personal property. So, hopefully, we don't have any that need to come to the board, but we will have to handle that in a timely fashion. We have till August fifth to get those heard. I know she made the publications and printed it in the paper. That way, we can let all the public know. I believe there was maybe one or two days that everybody's schedules would function and work, but we will do the best we can as we move forward. The other note, the assessor's office is working remotely until July twenty-eighth, is what I'm being told by the contractors. My little office, if you poke your head in, is now the, like, main center function. It's headquarters. So, we will be working in and out of there, but please, call the office. We have set up our voicemail where you can go direct. My staff and myself will be checking voicemails, email, things of that nature. If you have senior exemptions and there's nobody here physically, we have our secure Dropbox in the alley. Please drop them in there. We've posted signs everywhere we can think of to get that in there. Sean and Paula have done a great job of making sure we're on the website and we're out there publicly on social media to let the public know that, bear with us, we are getting our air conditioning units. And so, but we will be doing our best to service the public.
And then, we wanted to thank you for the patience. It's a labor of love, and it's gonna be well worth it. And we got, once we turn that air conditioner, and the whole thing is gonna be like, we will provide you with...
What heat is.
But, thank you, thank you for that reward. And there's any...
Oh, gentlemen, you know I will send you emails. I will be letting you know. Thank you, please pass all that information, because I do sit on numerous ag committees and the boards. That's one of my other hats that I wear. That's a way of life we need to protect, and I will protect it fiercely. Thank you. Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July, boys. Oh, what was the good news?
What was the good news?
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July, we got some rain. That's the best news I can come up with.
Thank you so much. We have Sheriff Nupres online, and he had a couple of things or an update for us. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. No updates on this end, but I do have an agenda item for a new contract in the, for detention decision.
There we go. So, I'm gonna share it.
Sorry, he was removed because we weren't forwarding any contractual information for the board to be sent, and that was blocked. My understanding was the process was going to entail Sheriff, did you hear that?
Oh, oh, I did, I'm sorry, I thought that it was gonna be forwarded to you.
I've not got a copy, I wasn't following you. And neither has Paula.
Derek? I, was I supposed to forward that?
I had to ask, but I didn't know if you did, so...
If I was supposed to, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess we can do that another time then.
We'll put it on the next, May sixteenth.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we have anyone from the clerk and recorder's office? Anyone from the treasurer's office? Mr. Attorney? Or do we have anyone from the board's office? And I want to remind all of us that here at ten a.m., we have a public hearing. We have a few public hearings items on this particular agenda, regardless of where we are on this, on this agenda. We will stop the meeting to enter into the public hearing. So, then we go to section five, presentations, consultant report. We have someone here, this is Mr. Dorykamp, Mr. P. Valdez, that signed up for a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Valdez, are you online? I don't believe he's on with us. We're gonna now move to, do we have anyone sign up for public comment? Mr. Dorykamp here?
Yes, sir.
And do we have anyone online that wishes to address the board? For public comment, you would, this is the time, just simply unmute, raise your hand, and you'll have three minutes. Here we are, we're gonna go to section eight. And finished with business, we have no items on that particular section, so we're gonna jump into section nine. Consideration of legal license removed for the third wall LLC, Mr. Dorykamp? And/or counsel?
I prefer.
I believe the application may have completed.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for counsel or anyone else, any comments this time? Comments?
No comments, Attorney.
And at this time, I want an occasion in motion.
Make motion to approve legal license removal to third wall LLC.
Second motion.
Commissioner S?
Yes.
Should we start it?
Yes.
Should we start?
Yes. And you, now, in the consideration of appointment to Los Angeles, water from the county's White County Health Board, Mr. Dorykamp?
Commissioners, before you say your reservation of appointment to Los Angeles and the White County Health Board, commensurate with the association of all of the state, solicited letters of interest. Two were received from Michael Airbug and Oliver Book.
Commissioners, any discussion?
Chairman, if I may, please, you're brought forward to the committee, which I asked, I think Commissioner Fusha, as well, in the Rockville County, for the appointing parties. Myself, as a board member of the Board of Health, I will be standing... I would be staying from any motion or second or vote today because of conflict of interest. But I think the committee has made a selection of the two commissioners.
And after much consideration, both highly qualified candidates, I would pick the nomination of Paul O'Gore to serve in position with the Los Angeles County Department.
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Reese, stop it?
Yes.
Commissioner S?
Yes.
And I would be staying.
Consideration of P.I.A. Amtrak 9833, last complaint due in running the Rockland First contract for $550,000, Mr. Dorykamp?
Commissioner, before your considerations here, but he probably have great money through the call department that prefers $550,000. The kinder road bridge match is $500,000 cash, $50,000 in private. Maybe a segment of low from where we left off in the kinder 325 up on what we call our Seale Hill, Westbury doors on past Monique. So that's the work to improve this contract. No one has signed a form?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner S, you have said, well, you had to abstain on this particular one, so. If I don't, Commissioner, this officer's question is to a financial director, do we have any any financial responsibility from the county that's that embedded? Is waiting in my circle?
Yes, yes.
My mouse is missing today. I left it like this. I can't get to faster than the mouse.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing this. If there is no other communication discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the IFR 933S, all paid with all contracts for $550,000.
Second?
Commissioner Reese, stop it?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Nine B, consideration IFR 24 dash RSR 02, maybe various county roads change order number four, Mr. Dorykamp?
Commissioner, before your consideration is IFR 24 dash RSR 02, change order number four. And that shall, this will move the light rack and bench commission location which is the only community center back to the Westbury location. My fault. I didn't investigate any further than our GIS would have shown as far as what was county right away or wasn't county right away. It was brought to my attention after we met with one of the property owners on the site that at some time they looked and they're gaining, excuse me, they're vacating and not been picked up by our GIS and became a faulty possession of that property. So rather than postponing this project is more, we are the, let this dead and wore over there. We'll just move the light rack and the bench to a different location, which was approved by Seale Major person.
At this time, you're going to be on the proper right of order?
This time it's in our right of order.
Thank you, sir. And so there is no change as far as the looking at the tower amount? The tower amount remains the same?
Tower amount remains the same, the contract has signed off. We don't need you.
There he goes. Commissioners, any discussion on this? Here in that, I'll entertain a motion. If you approve IFR 24 R002, maybe the various county roads change order number four. Second motion?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner S?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. Consideration of courthouse solar rain customer owner generation system. You're connection agreement with the city of Trinidad, Mr. Dorykamp?
Commissioner, before your consideration is courthouse solar rain customer own generation system in the connection agreement with the city of Trinidad. This pertains to our solar rating that is part of our H-Back, H-Tag, don't read. So this will be matter on our courthouse roof that requires us to stay in the 25 kW, that's part of the conversation.
We, that conversation to be continued.
We're going to put the, look for us to be able to put up the 25 kW. We have to have a new connection agreement, that's what's required.
I have so many comments, I don't know if I'm staying.
One question I have for you, the council, is everything of this contract, do you, are any issues that you've sought or done?
No, no big issues and I, I'm happy with the number 22, the turnover agreement, but it's, it is not.
I like that. That sounds very delicious and required. Well, you know, just unfortunate that we're trying to do our green new deal and we're getting our strengths regarding the amount we can save for the community. And what our government is asking us to do, the local power supplier will allow us to do. It's unfortunate. Maybe that will change down the road with these, with that individual power company. Hopefully they will see the light of content of their way through their wrongness in a way or consider a higher amount for our county to save our constituents dollars in terms of this resource.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any discussion?
Commissioner, I mean, they will allow for the larger output of solar or renewable, but we have to sell all that power back to the provider at wholesale cost and purchase the power back on usage and retail cost, which...
Defeats purpose.
The math is not math, so that's why we were worried about that.
Well, if you have a ton of, a hundred tons of something, selling it to me for a penny, I'll sell it back to you for a dollar. And so I tell you what, on that, I think we understand what is, what is happening here. Any additional comments? Otherwise, I'm entertaining a motion. Motion to approve the courthouse solar rain customer owner generation system. Better connection agreement with the city of Trinidad.
Second motion? Commissioner S?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. We're going to do one more and then we're going to take that for short pieces. Consideration of Lenny Field being IFB 2024 dash F0B, Mr. Dorykamp?
Commissioner, before your consideration is Lenny Field being IFB 2024 H603, the farm results for the delivery of approximately $8,000 related to asking to our fuel farm out of Fairgrounds. Acorn Petroleum, $2.64 down. Standard price $21,120 for low fuel. $2.78 dollars for down, standard price $21,120 for the sense. Mahalo Valley, $2.64 dollars for down, $21,120 for the loss of the bid. Would prefer counsel now, have you received from here?
Commissioner has, if you give me enough time to look it up. Under applicating non-policy, Article 5.101B, if two or more bids are received for the same total price or unit price and one of the bidders has its place of business located in Los Angeles County, the local bidder will be considered the lower bidder, or one of them in Los Angeles County.
Acorn has a facilitated mortgage accounting. I don't, excuse me, Lord North into the city. I don't believe, I think, I think it comes. Main offices, I believe, are in Los Angeles. Anyway, yes, there is a, there is a...
So if they're considered Los Angeles County business, then they will be considered under our policy in the law.
Thanks for that recommendation by Councilor. Are there any other questions? And I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner S?
Yeah. I would move to approve 2024 F03, the fuel bid to Acorn Petroleum at $2.64, $21,120.
Second motion?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner S?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. As a gentleman, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for a short pieces to come back at 10:00 to enter into the public hearing. Second?
Commissioner S?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Come on, air conditioning. You guys better enjoy it in the cooler. How does it, how does it, you know, you're...
I'm confused.
Yeah, because we can, that's the best way to receive. I have one of my little TVs are in my little office. I know how maintenance can be set over there.
TVs?
Yeah. The ones that work in the executive meeting room and the one that was in the hallway. For some reason, mine haven't been wired here. But I just wonder, despite, because I, anyway, I have a coffee machine and a man five towers, six computers. So I'm just going to have this set over here. I think so. Yeah, this thing is a, you will notice that I just got a little bit of a second. I don't know.
Yeah.
I need to run some. I don't know, I just feel safer in here than not getting old.
Okay. The library was the Canadian headquarters.
Yes.
And then they went to Europe. They trucked the oil fields, it's when the kids were out sitting, melting, not coming back.
Well, I'm letting him store everything in my A D room. I'm like, that's fine, because I just earthed all the kids back, so I can't store yourself. Whereas I have that problem. Just so I can even get out of my file cabinet. Just really dominating the family, guys.
That's more editing, I don't know. They say they want it.
No, you're good. I'll be here all night.
Why you're not?
No, it doesn't look, um...
Smaller?
It's smaller and smaller. But you're like...
Welcome back. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to resume the regular board of county commissioners. So move. Second by Commissioner S?
Second?
Sorry.
Commissioner S?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. So now it is 10:01. We're going to be going into the public hearing. We have three public hearings scheduled. Before I open up this particular portion of the meeting, I'm going to remind everyone that he's going to be providing a comment to the board of county commissioners either online or present, that it is the prerogative of this board to remain, to remain to the subject and respectfully address the questions from both ends, whether it is proponent or inopponent. I, as the chair of the board of county commissioners, have the authority to stop the meeting, the hearing at any point in time, should be yet disrespectful and violates the rules of ethics. So how you said that, at this time, it is 10:00 a.m. I'm going to open up this portion of the public hearings, special events for Midtranda Legacy Rodeo for July 6, 2024. And anyone wishing to come and testify, pro or against, will have to be sworn in. And so we have an application in front of us. And good morning, Mrs. Maria. How are you today?
Good morning, I'm good.
Good, please raise your right hand.
So I'm paying for my penalty perjury. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And say your name.
Jillian Murray.
Thank you.
Good morning, guys. So tell us about your activity, your event. We have the application in front of us. This is scheduled for July 6, which is just a few days from now.
Yes, so we actually have to cancel that one. Unfortunately, I can't go into much detail about it because we've got stuff involved. But we are no longer out at bits of 18, so.
Okay, so since that, that this license is...
Yeah, that one's...
You don't want to move forward with this license?
No.
Okay, so Chairman, having heard that, Ms. Maria, I will make the motion to deny the special events. Legacy Rodeo, July 6, 2024. Okay, second motion?
Commissioner S?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, and so this pretty much ends that one. That was, that was quick. Can we do that again?
No, 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 we need the other two.
So once again, it is now 10:04, the same rules apply. And because that's going to be a very, a whole different application, we are going to now enter into the special events for Midtranda Legacy Rodeo, July 26, 2024.
Yes.
Back with you, Mrs. Maria, and we're going to have to ask you again.
So I'm paying for my penalty perjury. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And say your name.
Jillian Murray.
Thank you.
All right, so once again, so the activity that we have in front of us is proposed for a legacy rodeo, July 26, 2024. Please walk us through the applications.
So absolutely, so this one is for the Friday of the Los Angeles County Fair. The fair board asked the rodeo to provide the liquor for the, I believe they wanted to start at the, for the cornhole tournament through the dance that night. And since they're a nonprofit and all this money will just go towards more stuff for the rodeo and the rodeo weekend. So we do have our bar trailer that we bring that we serve. It's like a dry bar setup. And I believe most of the stuff that we're serving are just canned stuff, so it's not any mixed in or any that type of thing.
No, no, uh, security is not here.
I don't believe, I don't think that they're wanting that. I think they just want the cans, like pre-mixed and canned stuff.
The R T, the R T Ds, ready to drink?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, that one is, um, we're going to have one bartender and one barback that doubles as security for us. And then as well as the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department is going to be... Um, and then as well as the Los Angeles County shares department is gonna be on site for our security. Um, if they don't band at the door, we're banding at the bar because I have a policy at all my events that you have to have a verified toilet and a band, you know, that be checked. That's our band in order, in order for us to serve them, so.
Sure, so let me yield the floor to my fellow commissioners. Uh, do you have any questions?
Uh, we don't, and to answer your question, I'm sure it does on the applications in all enters and virtually there, so it will be for the whole array. If chosen by Miss Maria to pursue and her operator, which would be the Los Angeles County Fair Board. But are there any that they have, Mr. Name, or if not, maybe in front of us today? So I think that doesn't require the licenses for the entirety. Um, and this would be just for the Friday? They are not gonna have it for the entire county fair?
No, it's just for the Friday. They just want it for, um, the, the cornhole tournament and then for the, the dance that they have at the kickoff that night.
And the letter is provided to us by Mr. Chantel Wilson. I think you're correct. Um, and all your licensing seems to be in effect. Your insurance, these are our, are stated through the, the county fair now. Your insurance matters, so I have another question.
Thank you, thank you. And we also see here that, that Mr. Joe Wilson, uh, set up security with the Sanes County Sheriff's Office. Two officers during the time, uh, they will be sold Friday, July twenty-sixth from four to midnight, uh, so thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I agree with you. Any additional information you would provide when asked, I would consider this.
Thank you. Commissioner House?
With all the information, I approve to approve the special events for midterm and legacy rodeo.
Can't be that.
No.
We have two secrets about.
Yes, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So please, please stand by. We, uh, order will be now. Let me open up the same, uh, the same, uh, process for anyone that would wish to provide comment in opposition of this liquor license application. Either present or online. Anyone wishing to provide comment in opposition of this, the approval of this, uh, liquor license, either present or online. It is the time to do so now. Here and now, let me go back to Commissioner Tony House, and now the motion will be accepted.
Okay, I approve to approve the special events for midterm and legacy rodeo July twenty-sixth, twenty-four. Second motion.
Commissioner Reese, go ahead.
Yes.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. Thank you so much. We conclude this section of this public hearing. Now we can go into special events for midterm and legacy rodeo August thirty, thirty-first, September one, and September second. So that's fourth and second, well, four days that, uh, once again, uh, is being applied for. Uh, Miss Maria, please raise your right hand.
So I'm a firm and a penalty perjury. The testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, and your name. Jillian Murray.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, once again, the same, uh, Miss Maria, please walk us through the application. This is the event we're in weekend.
Yes, absolutely. This is the hundred and fourteenth year of this rodeo. Um, we're bringing back, and this is where I will leave up to your guys' suggestion on it. Uh, we're bringing back the Friday night dance. Um, and so we were gonna have it in the park area upfront. Um, and so that would be a whole separate liquor boundary, but if you guys prefer to keep it all at the grandstands, we can have that at the grandstands and just have that as the liquor boundary. I don't know if you guys want, since it's the same permit, to have a contingency for that Friday, having the liquor boundary over the, you'll see on the map that I submitted over the park area, or if you just wanna have as the grandstand. But Friday night, we're gonna have the kickoff dance. Um, we have the band West Rock coming in. Um, it's gonna be just kind of like a barbecue type of thing. Um, Saturday and Sunday, we have two days of the C P R extinction rodeo. Um, as of right now, since exit eighteen had closed, they were our main sponsor, we had to cancel the big concerts after the rodeo, unfortunately. Um, but we're kinda leaving that open to hopefully if we can get some more funds built up, we can get those concerts back. Um, but as of right now, we don't have concerts after the C P R rodeo for Saturday and Sunday night. Um, and then on Monday, we are doing the, um, bringing back the free barbecue, but we're not gonna have liquor at that, it's not the bar. And then the liquor during the rodeo has gonna be a ranch rodeo on that Monday. So, and then same thing, we're banding at the door. Um, we have the tip certified bartenders at the, the mobile bar units and then at the rodeos and the kickoff dance. It's all gonna be just canned stuff, so it's not gonna be any pre-mixed or not any mixed up sex stuff.
Thank you, commissioners.
Oh, we need my calendar out there. Uh, so the Friday night would be the date of the thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
Is where you're asking to move the boundaries to the, um, park area?
Yeah, yeah, and so that would be just that, that park area, and then we could put up, you know, the snow fencing, finer fencing, because you have like a little, a two-foot pile just for the supplementing. We can fence that area in and then have the concert there, or we can have it in the grandstands if we just want to just give the license to the grandstands.
Let me, let me ask you, uh, what motion, uh, what would be more conducive for, for your entity?
So we like the idea of having it in the park, just so we can have, um, bouncy houses and stuff like that for the kids to go do while the adults watch the concert. Um, but, you know, if it's made as the same license, I didn't know if it was possible to cover that area for one night and then the rest of it covered that other area or not, because that's the only day that will have alcohol in that park area, is that Friday night. Um, the Saturdays, Sunday, Monday will all be in, you know, grandstands here, so.
So in your application, if you're going to present this as a package, is this show, um, correct, your alcohol meter of the park?
Yes.
So I don't think there would be a need for a request to ask. It's already included in the package.
Okay, okay, and I think I have it labeled as that's Friday, so.
Right, yeah, but that Friday, thirtieth is right.
Okay.
I don't think there's a need to make a request. I think it's already presented in the package. As it has been, and so the remaining due dates would be the next night and clarification from, uh, the, uh, the thirty-first, first, and second.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the boundaries were not. They're, they're listed on here, but so just for clarification, the date of the thirtieth would be the only day we would have alcohol being served in the, uh, alcohol park area.
Yeah.
And so, and, and this is a, a question for, not really for today's hearing, but just to be advised. I'm not sure if our capabilities provide bands in that park. I don't think there's sufficient.
Yeah, we have generators, so it's a smaller band, so they're not gonna draw as much.
Um. I don't think, or there is, you can, and you have security lined up for the entire?
Yep, yeah, we'll have, as it gets closer, um, the shares department will become involved and they'll have, uh, officers out there. We have to go through the process of, you know, signing them up and that type of thing. Um, but we are waiting to get that until it got closer because, you know, the sign up sheet was filed up for the, for the deputies, so. But yeah, just like last year, we'll have them, and then we have our own house security for everything too.
So there's not a contract in place with the shares that would give for this security, right?
No, they're, they're aware of it and they know that it's coming. They just don't wanna do it until it gets closer. So, and then we can provide that as soon as that gets all finalized, probably the beginning of August, we can submit that to, to them, you guys too, if you need that, so.
Yeah, I think we'd probably have to make a requirement upon, uh, a condition on Google that be submitted to the board's office. Um, prior to the event.
Yeah.
Probably would be sufficient, um, thirty days prior to the event. I'm not sure whether it's sufficient for me, for council, but that's an issue or not.
I agree.
I, I don't think you need a full thirty days. I mean, if, if, if it's a condition of the, the permit, if they don't have it submitted by the thirtieth, then they don't.
Okay.
They deserve.
So we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we wanna get it inserted.
Right.
And if you, did you have, you know, accomplished person, um, and done there, and also, um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I left my mouse at my other office, so I might go a little slow because. Um, the liquor liability is also set for that, um, four days.
Yeah.
It's in.
Yep, and it has the, um, county covered under the insurance.
The only thing I see that I would like to also, the strictly liability insurance to possibly be, um, amended. That it says the name of the insurer is exit eighteen incorporated.
And we're covered under that, so yeah, we'll get that updated.
We probably, now that you mentioned earlier in your first hearing, then you're along with your patient. I don't know if it's a legal issue, do you need to get that changed? As long as you are still doing business as.
Right.
Exit eighteen, and they're covered for that.
Right, yeah.
Uh, if you do get that changed to your new name or something, I don't know, you can submit that as well. That way it's, uh, so there's no legal issues.
Right, absolutely.
That's why I'm trying.
Thank you, uh. The, uh, one thing, uh, just for emphasizing once again, finally, I was clear, if you have a minimum of three transsecurity guards and staff during the duration of the event, including times when liquor is installed, I like that. Uh, we will also have other events for staff and radios during the, uh, duration of the event. Saturday, August through Monday the second, you're gonna have five transsecurity guards and staff. And so that is also gonna be well, and then you may mention, uh, also our friend, the sheriff's department. Uh, and as we said, we will just keep us abreast of what's gonna happen there. Commissioner House, has any questions? Let me go on now, online or here in person. Uh, do we have anyone that would like to provide, uh, testimony in opposition of this, the approval of this liquor license? Let me once again ask, uh, do we have anyone present or online that would like to provide testimony in opposition of the approval of this liquor license? Here and now, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Fairly toward making a motion. I'd like to thank the circular quarters office directors and the legal council as well, and the broadening for attending, uh, and the staff who are with us. Uh, with that being said, I would like to also approve special events for midterm and legacy rodeo, August thirty, three first, September first, and second, twenty twenty-four. With the conditions of the, that were stated of the security, um, and the insurance.
Excellent.
Second motion, I'd like to see which branch of county courts with the.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese, go ahead.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This public hearing concludes. So now commissioners, we're gonna go back into the regular, uh, agenda. We're gonna go to section nine I, consideration of resolution twenty-four dash zero twenty-seven for new extension for health, one solar LLC, Mr. Dorian Cam. You want a second and catch up on that? I believe you're gonna be the resolution, sir.
Eighteen one forty-three.
One forty-three.
Resolution for water county commissioner, Los Angeles County, Colorado, be affirmed and approved providing a one-year extension to special use for that number twenty-two twenty-three dash zero three filed by developments or LLC, all in all, considering the cycle is pre-fulfilled LLC. Seeking approval for closed facility located about eight point six miles east of downtown Agua. For approximately two thousand eighty-one acres, leased by the land in parts of section six, seven, eight, seventeen, and eighteen. Township thirty-south, range sixty-three west, in parts of section twelve, township thirty-south, range sixty-four, located in Los Angeles County, Colorado. Resolution number twenty-four dash zero twenty-seven, whereas Oprah Solar LLC filed special use for that application on twenty-two twenty-three dash zero three. Seeking approval for closed facility, and whereas water county commissioners, our public hearing on June twenty, twenty twenty-three approved the issue, be as noted in the resolution twenty-three dash zero sixteen. And whereas health, water, LLC asks for his given extension of special use for that on June eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Now, therefore, be resolved by water county commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, and request for early extension for the start of destruction, then the special use for that. Twenty-two twenty-three dash zero three, serial code two, Oprah Solar LLC asks until June eighteen, twenty twenty-five to begin destruction. And special use for that twenty-two twenty-three dash zero three, destruction is not commised by the state, it's special use for that twenty-two twenty-three dash zero three, long expiry. My motion, wait a second, from the both of resolutions adopted on the second of July twenty-two twenty-four by water county commissioners. Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by the super.
Thank you, as a matter of fact, uh, have we, uh, reminded you, do we have any special conditions on the approval of the extension? I would imagine it's already included in the language.
I don't recall any conditions on the extension, so.
The original is.
Yeah, the original issue be, uh, or maybe give it the proper foreign process.
So, thank you. Commissioners, any discussion on this? I'll entertain a motion.
You approve of the resolution twenty-four dash two, seven, permanent extension for our LLC.
Second motion.
Commissioner Reese, go ahead.
Yes.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. Nine eight, consideration of courthouse H V A C upgrade, knowledge, and door zero zero one, Mr. Dorian Cam.
For commissioners, consideration of courthouse H back, upgrade, knowledge, and door, this was about one. And that show of the district court versus condo, it was a very insubstantial installation that the, uh, original investigations of the courthouse did not show that these were going to be in the way of some of the penetrations as well, or possible, including their fits, et cetera. So there was a need to, uh, change locations of these condos.
So the J door you're asking is four thousand fifty-five dollars?
Four thousand fifty-five dollars for the movement of the large condo. You still need to give a bill for the movement of the small one. And when I was milling about very rare pre-inspection inspection for this is ever that been or designed, he said in order to be able to discover everything, the cost, the cost of that, maybe just an inspection part of, of the same project. Do I know that law or not?
In extension of your event, and now that we have explained the work with this, so we know exactly what we have to handle.
That's my separate way of thinking, though. We ran into a few bug moose as a, of a contingent. And one kept a wall, a vault wall there between my office and Sean's office, um, to place a panel in there, considering the economy. And down from the up course to the basement. And when I went to cut through that wall, I'm not sure how many of these are still, that little wall, so that's why we walked down to the used wing on first floor to see that hole, it's covered by it now, just before we get into, into our offices. Again, something else that apparently can't be discovered, but actually Louis's physical fairly upset her.
And we have the funding bill for this, right?
Um, my attorney, the court's son, legal, is not able to use the, some of his court operating costs for this. At the end of the state's history, it was confirmed. And this invoice is the parrot to that, so I'm resolved to pay for four thousand dollars since it personally was. I need the court.
Of course, go ahead. I have the question straight. Okay. Thank you, uh, and, uh, as we look at this, uh, I don't mind, it involves, uh, forty-six hours of, uh, of labor that, uh, that's relevant at this point, so thank you, commissioners, any questions? Uh, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve for house H V A C upgrade, knowledge, and door zero zero one. Second motion.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese, go ahead.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, and I thank you for, uh, securing the funds with our system, uh, passed on to, uh, to them, uh, I think you, you know, book. I said, I think. Yes. Mr. Prime, I know it's, uh, very competitive seeing this project, which is like the, so we really appreciate this contribution there. Oh, we have the, one of the finest courses I've been meeting, the financial habits. That's cool. Uh, consideration of those unpaid for the second half of June two thousand twenty-four finance electric over here.
Uh, here as two thirty to twenty twenty-four is two hundred and two, two hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Do you have any questions on payroll? Two hundred and forty cents? The invoices paid on June nineteen? One million, three forty-four, five oh two, and twenty-four cents. That was in this packet that I wanted to bring up was one of the payments for the courthouse project ready to act, was one million, one forty-four, seven eleven, sixty-one cents. Did I miss anything, did I have questions on this packet here for invoices? No, okay. And then we have a small packet that was around June twenty-first, four thousand eight sixty-four, forty-nine cents. And if there really was anything to bring to attention. Can I share your questions?
Yes, yes, yes. I thank you once again, I'll entertain a motion. If it's approved, if it goes in here, within second half of June two thousand and twenty-four.
Second motion?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chairman, if I may, before we go into the executive session, I assume we have a new face here at the county. I would like, assess or model to introduce our newest member to the county.
Director Lombrad?
I would love to hear it, thank you, good morning, and how's it going? Unless you often we get to have a man in the meeting, ladies.
Well, gentlemen, I have the honor of having a part-time summer intern. This is Junior Gomis. I have known him for a couple of years. He was also one of the gentlemen I got to coach running. He's a senior graduate, he was valedictorian from Kim, Colorado, and he actually asked if he can intern this summer here, and we were able to make it work. So, because he's very interested in how county government functions, he is also going to school to become an architect. So this has been a perfect, he's getting to see real live hands-on architecture in the making, but I will let him introduce himself.
You gave us a speech of graduation, you can just repeat that.
Just keep waiting.
Welcome.
Tell them where he goes to.
I will be attending Steve Denver this fall, as she said, to study architecture. And honestly, this job has been amazing. I'm loving getting to learn everything sitting on this meeting. Hopefully, I could get another internship at State Capitol, I think that would be awesome, because this is truly awesome for me, and while everyone keeps questioning if I'm enjoying my job because it's, it seems, sounds boring, I, I genuinely am, it's great, this is great.
Oh, fantastic. I'm so glad that you chose to do this, because now that you know that it begins right here, county government, and it goes all the way, as we say, from the courthouse to the White House, there is a pathway to actually understand how government works. So congratulations and thank you, and we should have best success in architecture.
And you've come to the big part of Los Angeles County.
Appreciate your efforts, thanks for watching.
And whatever you learn here at Los Angeles County, over there, when you go to the Capitol, take that knowledge with you, baby.
That's not beyond speed, guy.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioners, that was fantastic. We are now gonna go to our executive session, we're going in the executive session under twenty, CRS twenty-four, six, four, two, four B. A, the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sell of any real estate, personal, or other property interest, start close to CRS twenty-four, six, four, two, four B, confirmed by the county attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice, on specific legal questions, A, of the settlement, B, court requests, and C, ground ambulance. I will entertain a motion to go into the executive session with a small recess. So look, second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.